This meeting of the Planning Board of November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act in that notice was posted on municipal website, posted outside of Borough Hall and published in the Courier-News and Star-Ledger. This meeting is a judicial hearing and decorum appropriate is expected at all times. Roll call.
Andrea Dare.
Here.
Chris Addicks.
Here.
Art Aikens.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Craska.
Here.
John Manilio.
Here.
Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember of room.
Here.
And acting chairperson Warner is excused.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, we're gonna start with the oath of office for Barry Van Horn. Is that Kara? Come on up Barry. Barry's being appoint- right in front. He's being appointed to the Planning Board.
Yeah, you're gonna, your arm's gonna get tired.
All right, um, okay, I Barry Van Horn.
I Barry Van Horn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of a Planning Board member.
Perform all the duties of a Planning Board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Just so the board.
Take your seat of the day.
The board knows, he just got licensed in New Jersey with his PE.
I saw that. Congratulations as well.
Great. Fantastic.
That's great.
Great addition to the board.
Right.
Thank you.
Um, the minutes from the regular session, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, um, there's just one correction that I noticed. Um, in the approval of the minutes, it doesn't have a motion and it has myself seconding it. I actually made the motion for both of them and Andrea seconded it. So with those changes, I just need a motion.
So moved.
AI, AI, AI.
AI.
AI. Oh, AI, excuse me.
Roll call.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Jason Craska.
Yes. All right, there's no resolutions. We do have two appointments tonight. Um, Ryan, correct my uh pronunciation here, is it Bakie? All right, um, as the new board secretary and Kevin Suker is the deputy deputy board secretary moving forward. Can't see them on camera, but they're sitting down there. Actually, you can.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Jason Craska.
Yes. Welcome. All right, first discussion item, um, we have the A R B procedure and quarter lot final discussion prior to the council introduction. Um, I know we had some lengthy discussions in previous meetings about this. Um, did everybody have a chance to look through the documents that were sent back to us with those few red lines on them? It was mostly just cleaning it up and changing a few punctuations. Um, any discussion on any items before we send it up to the council?
Looks good to me.
With those revisions, um, go ahead then, I guess. Kevin, if we can get those sent up to the council for their next meeting and put this to bed before the new year, hopefully?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be uh, it'll be on the agenda for introduction on Monday, so it won't actually be on the agenda tomorrow.
Yes. Uh, next, uh, do we need to vote on that or?
Probably a good.
Yeah.
A good thing to do.
All right, so we need.
It's gonna come back to you. Yeah.
It's gonna come back to us and you could see, I just made a couple other comments and questions for the council to consider.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that may just kinda tie it up a little bit. Ultimately, they'll put together their final draft that'll come back to us after they introduce, so we can look at this again. But yeah, we might as well just do a vote and send it up with changes.
Make a motion to send to council.
Second.
Roll call.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Jason Craska.
Yes. All right, moving on, we have the checklist for compliance Mike sent out with some changes. Um, again, looking to send this up to council. Did everybody get a chance to look at that one and review Mike's changes? I think it cleans it up a lot. Um, cleans up language that hasn't been changed in fifteen years.
Yeah, it just, it gives you the flexibility on eleven by seventeen or electronic or bigger or whatever the state comes out with. Uh, changed it to make some of the stuff in line with the current regulations defining a few things. But uh, more importantly, I stole Bridgewater's escrow agreement and how the punishments was, right now, there's not a policy. So should the board make this recommendation, the, the escrow agreement and that Kara has some comments of tweak the escrow agreement, but making that part of the checklist.
It looked good to me with the, you know, when it gets down, you replenish it to twenty-five percent. So at least there's a standard.
Yeah, exactly.
As opposed to case by case, which gets everybody in trouble sometimes about being subjective. This way would be, this is the, this is what the ordinance says is twenty-five percent and it's applicable to all applications.
Any comment from the board? Questions? Kara, anything?
I just had a couple questions or, or comments for you guys to consider. Do we still want sixteen copies? Is that what we wanna recommend? I know we're going down to the smaller versions. Do we wanna, you know, give an option or just say, just do go down to smaller versions and still do the sixteen plus the electronic? Um, that's really up to you guys. Um, again, this is also something that would have to go to council, back to you, so you'll be able to look at this again. Um, other, two other questions I had, um, I guess we do get a receipt and Mike, this is probably more for you. We get a receipt indicating that, that deposits, that fees are paid. Is it an actual receipt? Okay, and then there's a certificate, um, regarding prior actions or is it just copies of the?
Just copies. Typically, the, we, there's been a policy, the borough handles that typically internally to get the copies.
Yep, copies of the, the prior resolutions and things like that. Um, I do think according to statute, we have to provide the ten percent of the corporate uh, ownership of any applicant, regardless of what type of application it is. So I think we should, under H, I think we should require that regardless. Um, and not just for subdivisions or um, uh, multiple dwellings, whatever that one pertains to. And I think there was one more. This isn't my question, under K, we don't need that information, you don't think? And, and I just wanted, just for my purposes, so I understand.
Well, it's my understanding that these are approvals outside, should the board grant approval, that have to comply with D E P. Uh, to make it on the upfront, I don't think it's, I don't think that's.
That's fine, totally fine. Yep. All right, other than that, I'm good.
Anybody else on the board? Any comments?
Yeah, no, I think Kara actually hit all my points. Um, I don't know, do we need sixteen copies of the actual application and checklist? I mean, the, I think that's more for completeness purposes.
Typically, it's just the plans, John.
The plans, yeah, but the A list sixteen copies of.
Yeah, all the appropriate application forms, yeah.
So the plans, I agree with the, the applications, I think you just need it for.
So just clarify to make it sixteen copies of the drawings.
Correct.
Additional thirteen copies of drawings.
Right.
Okay.
At the reduced size.
The reduced size.
Eleven by seventeens.
So that's the drawings.
Right, and then Kara was saying about, um, K getting rid of that, that's fine, but that you probably should add wetlands as uh, item. I guess, L thirteen. Location of natural features, wetlands, just so it's added in there, if there are wetlands.
L?
L?
Is it L?
Oh, I.
I, sorry.
Hi.
Yep.
That's the other L.
Lowercase L.
L's the deed restrictions.
Uh, that, yeah, that's the only comments I had.
I agree with all of them. Anything else from the board? And do we have a motion to move, um, send to council? Yeah. Just for the.
Submit the three.
Right.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna clarify that the additional drawings, drawings, not application, will be of the eleven by seventeen or as directed by the board. So there's some major application the board would like to see to scale plans, we could request that. If it's something small, then it's just eleven by seventeens of the drawings.
Yeah, additional drawings at the request of the board.
Right.
We have a motion with those changes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Jason Craska.
Yes.
Um, and then we kinda touched on the escrow agreement already that, um, Mike sent out as a sample that he borrowed from Bridgewater. Um, basically, it just cleans up our language, giving a percentage of when they hit a twenty-five percent, they have to replenish. Um, so using this as a sample, does anybody have any discussion comment? Mike, Kara?
Yeah, the only comment I had was in there, it talks about that the fees must be provided within fourteen days of execution of the agreement. If that agreement's gonna be part of the application, the fees are also part of the application. That fourteen day period would apply to any replenishment. So Mike and I just talked about a little change to that language.
In section four?
Yep.
Yeah, she's saying to clarify it so that when the application submitted with the escrow agreement, that the fees are there with the application, as opposed to saying fourteen days later.
Then if it needs to be replenished, it has to be replenished within fourteen days of receipt, of the request.
Yeah.
Makes sense?
Yes. Any comments from the board? All right, do we have a motion to send that up to council?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Jason Craska.
Yes. All right, thank you. You guys are gonna have a busy meeting. Um, so pending business, um, gonna kinda do the tree orders and stormwater ordinance together. We don't have much information on those yet for us to have an open discussion. Um, I know the Environmental Commission has been looking at these.
Yes.
So I don't know if we wanna get a.
No, and I think Kevin's putting it on the uh, the agenda just to, so that it doesn't fall off the agenda at some point. What we're trying to do is to put items that are in current or in need of discussion on the agenda so that we have the ability to understand where they're at at any given point in time. Um, cause I think what's happening, or what has happened, is some things begin to fall off the agenda. It kinda goes away because we get caught up in other elements. Um, but yeah, the, uh, the Environmental Commission has put forward, um, uh, or I shouldn't say put forward, they, they, I've had some discussions with the Environmental Commission regarding the, uh, the stormwater ordinance as it relates to a tree ordinance. Um, and, and that's an ongoing discussion and Larry and I have just had some discussion about this. It's probably a good idea for us to get together, a couple of representatives from council and a couple of representatives from the environmental, to have a discussion, um, about where this is going because there's, you know, there, there's different interpretations of what the state is looking for. Um, and that different interpretation is mine. Um, and, well.
This is not just about.
I am. Well, yeah, and, and I'll be, I'll be blunt about it. You know, the, the, the way the draft ordinance, um, was put together by the state and given as a part of this package, um, it, it mandates a property owner, if they cut a tree down on their property of a caliper, that's what, three inches, three and a half inches, somewhere around there? They have to, at their expense, they are mandated then by law to replace a tree on their own property. Now, I understand the idea of replacing trees, it's a good thing to replace them. But if you're a homeowner and you won't, you don't want a tree in your backyard, government should no way be going near your backyard telling you, you have to have a tree. To me, that's absolutely wrong. So I think there's better things that we can do through education and I think the Environmental Commission's done a great job of educating people um, in terms of the benefits of trees and, and greenery and, and, and they've done a gr- I think in the past couple of years, a great job at it. And I think there's an ability there for us to have a discussion and come up with something that's beneficial to town, to the environment, without being, uh, an inordinate overreach of government into someone's private property. That's why I have a different interpretation. So, um, but I think.
Do we have any lawyers that may have an interpretation about that?
Yeah.
Sorry, just asking.
Well, and, and I think, and that's, that's a part of it. I've asked Mike to look into it and Mike actually gave me a stack of paperwork. We, there's really no statute behind it. There's some rules and there's some interpretations, but there's no statute behind it. Um, so I think that's where we have to have some of this discussion. Um, I know there are some towns that have adopted it. I, not all, but there are some. Uh, do we have to adopt something? I don't know, because our, the way our ordinance reads right now, the borough is responsible for, uh, replacing trees that we take down that are in our jurisdiction, um, in, in the rights of way, in the parklands, uh, in our public spaces. And, and we have that policy in place already. So, you know, the, the reach into the private property realm is of, to me, it's a very big deal. And I think we need to tread very carefully and that's why I think we should have a, a discussion about it.
So then going forward, you and I can talk about setting up some sort of meeting?
Absolutely.
In the next month, before the end of the year?
If not, if not before the end of the year, right after the term.
Well, cause my understanding is that a couple of these things are past due.
Yeah.
On the ordinance adoption, so I don't know what the teeth are.
Yeah.
The back end of, not complying with the adoption of the ordinance, but the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Well, maybe it could even be, have a meeting about having a meeting.
That's so government, Larry. Um, but no, we'll, we'll have a chat, we'll figure it out. Cause as you know, leading up to the new year, there's a whole lot of.
Uh, yes.
Stuff and transition. So, um, we've just gotta make time.
All right, so we're not making any decisions on anything right now?
No.
We're not prepared to anyway.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, bear, bear in mind, the ordinance can't straddle a year, so, so what'll happen is, um.
Well, we're not even anywhere near that.
Until the end of the year.
We're not anywhere near that. We still have to decide whether or not to adopt the state.
What I'm saying legislatively, you are, because the governing body doesn't have enough time to, um.
We haven't even proposed.
The governing body doesn't have enough time to, to have an introduction, a public hearing and adoption.
Right.
If, if in fact, they weren't introducing on Monday, which is not the case. I just wanna let you know, you do have time. This is not something that's pressing against the year.
Yeah.
From, from a legislative standpoint.
Got it.
All right. We have the E V stations for residential parking decks. Um, are we, do we wanna discuss that one tonight or are we?
No, I think that's another one that, that the planning board, that Roger brought to the planning board. Uh, the, the board felt that it was, uh, a, a, a very good discussion and, uh, implementation of an ordinance that would, uh, regulate E V as it relates to development, yeah.
Where they are in the development.
Correct.
Not under, not underneath the buildings.
Not underneath the residential, uh.
Adjacent to buildings, underneath, yeah, absolutely, yeah. And again, I think this falls into that we can't let it fall off the, the radar. Uh, so it's on there. So at every meeting, we can have a discussion and say, okay, well now, let's, let's schedule this for our discussion at the next meeting.
So that, well, going forward though, if we have an application come in, we would address it right then and there and say like we did, you can't have them under the, in the deck, you can't have them under the building.
Right.
So we'll just deal with that until we can get to an ordinance.
Correct.
Correct. Yep.
The ordinance would give you a little teeth to point to something, but certainly in connection with any site plan review, you have the ability for safety and other reasons to say.
Yes.
This is where we want it, this is where it's okay.
Um, the insurance of the two thousand twenty-five R F P professionals guidance. Um, I assume we're, I assume that's coming from Kevin, looking for guidance if we're doing quotes or if we're.
Your, your professional contract's ended the end of the year.
Yeah.
It doesn't preclude you from extending them a month or so, but it's something at some point, um, maybe when the, the chair is back, you, you just, again, provide the municipality some guidance. We, we will, as we've done before, uh, issue R F Ps for, um, for the boards.
But my suggestion to the board is, um, we, we have done that, we actually have responses back. Um, and I, my suggestion would be we just reconvene into executive session the next meeting when the chair is back and, and we can have that discussion.
Fine with that. Anybody else? All right. Um, twenty twenty-five meeting schedule, as the planning board's typical, we're the second and fourth Wednesday of each month. Um, we did switch to six P M. this year in mid-year. Um, the meetings are here. The only two dates I, I went through and figured them all, um, that conflict with anything if we don't wanna publish them are November twenty-sixth, which is the day before Thanksgiving. Typically, we don't have a meeting that night. And the way it falls this year is Christmas Eve will be a Wednesday night. I assume we are going to.
That sounds like a party.
So if we want, we can just publish all the others on the second and, uh, fourth of each month.
I think that's a good thing to do.
Still at six?
Still at six.
Yep. Yeah.
That's helpful because as Kara pointed out, one of our newspapers aren't publishing.
Yeah.
So I'd like to get this publication in while the legislation's figuring out what we're going to do.
Mm-hmm.
So between, it'll be helpful because we'll be able to cover the meetings all the way, at least until October, uh, under the, the current statute.
Do we need a motion on that or?
Uh.
Normally, you vote on a resolution that adopts that, so I would say yes, you need a motion.
And to, uh, authorize the, uh, meeting on, on those, on the second and fourth Wednesday of every month.
On the first.
Through the month of October and November, December, you'll decide, I assume.
So we can still have the first meeting of the month in December.
Excluding the, the fourth meetings of November and December.
Yeah. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Who is the second?
Me, Roger.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Jason Craska.
Yes. All right, thank you. Um, applications required by the Regional Center Partnership. We have one from Bridgewater. Mike, do you wanna just give a quick recap on this?
It's basically a pad mounted huge battery bank. Uh, it's not in the application, but I think it's to help the grid during brownouts. It, it, they're proposing a, a pad mounted transfer, uh, substation and massive batteries that are pad mounted that obviously are gonna be used during low voltage, in my opinion, to help the region out. Uh, I ran this briefly by, uh, Robert Lynn, the fire marshal, who I think reached out to the board engineers. Uh, it's just a concern from the borough. That's why we get these notices, to see if this is gonna have an adverse or any impact on the borough. And his opinion was it was so far away that even if there's a fire, it should not adversely impact the borough streets or residents. So there's, uh, that's why you don't see a report. If there was something that I thought would have an impact on the borough, I'd write a report for the planning board to, to, uh, review a letter report. But I didn't write one because I don't, I don't think there's anything really to write about other than there, this is happening and it's down by the sewer. The waste, S R V S A plant up in Homus.
Yeah, that, that's where the, the county parks their.
Yes.
Our dilapidated vehicles.
Yes, right next to it.
Yeah, so are they, are they looking at the upper part of that lot or the lower part? Cause doesn't the lower part go underwater?
I, it's a subdivision. I think Kevin said they were looking at this, uh, they're subdividing the property, so the regional authority still owns property, but I think it's the upper part, Mayor, that's not flooding.
This is in conjunction with Jase, with, uh, P S E N G?
Yes, it has to be. It, the application.
From their substation.
Yeah.
So are all the substations gonna get this ultimately, like the one we have?
It's battery, it's a storage of power, but they don't go into why. I'm just speculating that you only store power when you need it during a brownout or something, in my opinion, to buffer the system.
Yeah. Is, is it, is it a P S project or is it a, a county improvement authority project or, we don't know?
I do have some familiarity with that site. Um, the last administration looked at that site as a future D P W site. It, it is adjacent to the existing county garage there. Um, we had looked at that site at that time, the county advisors, they did have a lease on that property, I assume, for the same facility, or a site, uh, battery recycling agency. Um, their agreement called, it, it, I believe it was a ten year lease, but they had to, within five years, start the project. I believe this is the project.
Okay.
So, um, you know, the site, if I recall correctly, it's about, uh, the site's a, a little over, uh, two acres. When we led, looked at it, it sounds like, it sounds like the S, the improvement authority is maintaining a small portion of that and they're gonna subdivide it and that con, that, that developer, who we spoke about four or five years ago, is now starting that project.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Communications, round four obligations. Um, I think everybody got them sent out to them.
Yeah, I, I can talk a little bit to that. Um, obviously, the numbers came out, uh, for affordable housing. Uh, we are meeting tomorrow evening, uh, with the redevelopment committee along with, um, uh, representatives of the planning board, zoning board, um, our planner, our affirmative action planner, our affirmative, uh, affordable housing planner and, um, and our attorney, our affordable housing attorney. Uh, we've got a lot of work to do in a short period of time, so tomorrow is, uh, is kinda like the game plan. Uh, we're gonna give Mike some marching orders.
Sure.
On updating our current, which I'm sure you're probably already beginning to delve into. Um, and the attorney will then also guide us on what they feel may be appropriate or not appropriate to include in our, in our overall plan. Um, so more, more to follow after that, but, uh, but it's beginning.
It's moving.
Mayor, what's also in your packet is that proposed legislation, um, that. That they've proposed to reduce your numbers from your prospective need numbers from seventy-four to twenty. I mean, whether or not that ever comes to fruition. I mean, I think that's a.
Yeah.
A pie in the sky idea, but.
Yeah.
Yep.
Never know.
Yeah. There's a whole lot of movement going on. There's also a number of municipalities that are challenging the, uh, the legislation in court now.
Right.
They're expecting a judgment soon. I, so who knows? But we, we can't wait, so we just have to keep moving forward with it.
All right. I have no additional comments. We're gonna, at this time, open the meeting up to the public. Hearing none, we'll close the public portion. I don't believe we have anything to go into executive for. Any comments, anything from the board, Mayor?
Mister Chair, just one thing. Um, if you might recall, New Jersey Elixir, we adopted a resolution a while back. It had two conditions that the applicant was looking to change. The requested, uh, changes to the conditions came back before this board. The board changed the hours, but did not wanna change the alleyway condition of providing proof of, of use.
Mm-hmm.
I've been contacted by the attorney. Um, they would like to come before the board to talk about that. Um, and I reached out to them before this meeting to see if they were coming here, cause I never heard anything. They said, no, but we would like to come at the next meeting. So I guess if we could, if it's all right, I said I would check with the chair, check with the board, make sure that's all right. They would like to come and, and discuss what their changes would be. Um, at this point, I don't think they would need to notice or do anything like that, depending upon what their request would be and what the board's consideration would be, then they may have to go back and notice for a meeting. But, um, I said I would bring it to the board and see if that was okay to put on the agenda for the next meeting.
What do we have on the agenda for the next?
Route twenty, uh, R O T twenty-two needs to come back to you with a, a final, right? Uh, that they, they, you approved their preliminary. That's the only thing, other than items that you have listed here, that's the only application you're hearing, um, that, uh, at that meeting.
Right.
Should be quick, I would assume, so.
I, I don't think it will be long.
I have no issue with it unless anybody.
Would you like them scheduled before, uh, road twenty-two, route twenty-two?
Yeah, I would let them come in and get out before sitting through the whole.
All right, I'll let, I'll let the attorney know and then we'll just put it on the agenda.
Okay. So you'll, you'll have Elixir come in first. I, I would also, you know, as long as they're not looking for relief from that requirement, um, to make it go away, because they have to have a means of egress. They, it's, it's, it's a moot point. If they're, if they're looking to create a different means of egress out the back, then that's probably something we can discuss, but.
Yeah, I don't wanna speak for them, Mayor, and I don't wanna to, talk too much about it without them being here. Yeah, I don't wanna speak for them, Mayor, and I don't wanna to, talk too much about it without them being here.
Yeah.
Again, have them come, have them make their request and then based upon what they're asking for, um, if they need to notice,